Somebody will be. Believe for long.
Could be that. Doesn't matter. Yes. This is very good. If. Quiet. For you. I'm trying to help. Everybody killed in my. This time. Which walks up. Oh. That brother. Good. Say. We have ladies. You're done. So there's. He's. Get the. He. See. She don't want to. First. My face is back. Yeah. She. Yeah. Yeah. I listen. I. It's really. On. Yeah. Yeah. Different assumptions. Yeah. When I have seven names, what they said, you know, on the fact. That's. Sure. It's. It's like. He said. Yeah. What is. We love. I'm. Pretty cool. That's mainly about. You're a team. Parts. That's. Yeah. It's good. I like. Yeah. And so. All of my. All of this. Do you. And. I also. He. Well.
Seven o'clock. It's time to start our February twenty council meeting. Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
President.
Mister Marmy.
President.
Mister Neil.
Here.
Mister Ralph.
Here.
Mister Ryan. Miss Blind. Present. Mister Chu. Mister Cost.
Here.
Mister Hauser.
Here.
Mister Labuda.
Here. We please rise from the invitation by Mister Labuda and then please remain standing.
Howard Grant. Heavenly Father, to come to your presence evening. We thank you for this day. You've given us. Pleasant weather that we've experienced. This week. I just ask you be with us this evening in our. Fox. Help them to be fruitful. Help them to be beneficial. For our city. I also ask a. For edge and protection. Of our safety forces. As they protect us each and every day. Against the various things that can harm us as a community. Just be with us this evening. Help us to remember your vision. For our city. These things I asked of you to say. Amen.
Commander.
Commander. Why would you like to enter this story?
A slight welcome. Miss Elena Terrado style. Welcome young lady. She is a first grader at McGuffey Elementary right here. Okay. Come on. It's right here. Stand right here. There you go. Stay on really laughing. Here. Ready?
I plan to be with the white of the United States of America. Answer your father's prayers. One. A. Infixable. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very nice.
Uh, next up is, um. Caucus is this, um, council's time to discuss anything that pertains to the agenda. Do we have anything tonight?
President. Mister Marmy. I make a motion to excuse Mister Chu and Mister Ryan.
Second.
Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister. Howser, all favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um. All kind of same sign. That passes eight zero. Next up is minutes of February fifth. Uh, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by the Buddhist, second by Howser. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All kind of same sign. That passes eight zero. Next up, appointments that are none this meeting. Uh, reports of standing committees, finance services. Capital and permits personnel without objection that will be received and filed. Uh, reports from city official. Uh, Ryan Bob operating. Report for the period ending January. Thirty first, twenty four. Uh, Brendan Cooper Tax Administrator income tax revenue reports for the period. End the, um, January of twenty twenty four. Next up on our agenda, we have a certificate of recognition by Mayor Hall and myself. For Mister Steel Meister. Drive me up there.
Yeah, we'll come down.
We will. We just will get right to center here. Oh. How you doing? Yeah. Thanks for coming in. Um, everybody that's been following Wildcats and all this year basketball, they had seventeen three year postseason. Uh, we've received it for the first game on March first. And, uh, thirty three seeds. So I wish you best of luck. But that's how it works. It was like this with our city. But, uh, and I'm a good proud Wildcat and obviously many of your faculty went to McGuffey too. So that was kind of cool. And, uh, but, um, we heard they still coming in. While we certainly know basketball is a team sport and it takes the whole team. He is the first one to tell us half the fact, I'm sure. The seventeen and three steals certainly hold his weight. In a phenomenal way. Uh, this young man, uh, scored his thousands career point this year. I believe it should free truck. Is that correct? Uh, which was, you know, kind of cool, but, uh, very neat. And, uh, there's only he's only the ninth player ever in the history of North Wildcats who has got quite a ways. To get that many points and he's still scoring, so. That's a major certificate of recognition. Still Meister thousands career point, uh, scored on February ninth, twenty twenty four. Newark High Wildcat basketball and Mister Harris, go ahead.
So I talked to Coach Quackemish. He said as a freshman, steel only scored four points for the whole year. As a freshman. So he became a ball. Also, he is, um, first, uh, team OCC in football. Um, some district eleven, first, uh. Team OCC in football. And third team. Third team Ohio. And then their OCC champs this year, so. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Do you want to say anything? One opportunity. You'll take that. Yeah. Guys are welcome to step out of the line. Yeah. Well done. That's a lot. We hope to see you there, buddy. Thank you.
Uh, next up is communications. Um, Ohio Lawler. Uh, state key favor regarding complaint by Mister Farlick about. Uh, city of Newark. Jason, uh, given Kusakton County Prosecutor Attorney regarding fraud allegations by. Mister Farlick against the city of Newark. Uh, Dave Farlick regarding email to the mayor, council president. Alex Rose Marketing Manager, Leck County. H C Partners. Save lunch right along. Along. Uh, March eighth through twelve. Ohio Division of Lucker. Uh, transfer application from J James, I N C D B A North. Save a lot, three forty nine East Main Street. To, um, sell. Like question. One O L C D B A North Save a Lot. Three forty nine East Main Street, North Ohio. Uh, next up is public hearing. Um, twenty four dash twelve. Janine, we please read the public hearing.
Resolution number twenty four dash twelve by Mister Ralph, Mister Marty, Miss Blind and Mister Labuda. A resolution approving the renewal application for placement of farmland in an agricultural district and declaring an emergency.
Do we have anybody here to speak for against? Public hearing? Bye. Okay. That'll be close, Janine. Speed it.
Resolution number twenty four dash twelve by Mister Ralph, Mister Marty, Miss Blind and Mister Labuda. The resolution approving the renewal application for placement of farmland in agricultural district and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of the public hearing. What is your wish? Mister President. Mister Ralph. Make a motion to adopt twenty four dash twelve. Got a motion by Mister Ralph. Second. Second by Mister Labuda. Do any discussion, Mister Ralph?
Uh, the only reason for the emergency clause on this was because it was late getting to us. Trying to make a file deadline.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marmy.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Chu, Mister, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four dash twelve passes eight zero. Next up is Capitol from citizens. This is your opportunity to speak. Um. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. Your name and address. About three minutes. We have anybody? You have another opportunity later in the agenda. Anybody at this time? Okay. Next up is ordinance on the second reading. There are none, uh, this meeting. Next up ordinance on the first reading. Um, twenty four dash oh two.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero two by Mister Lang, Mister Labuda, Mister Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind and Mister Ralph. An ordinance preventing the position classification pay range and department authorization tables of the city of Newark Department of Safety Division of Police by creating the classification of body worn camera administrator and setting the compensation therefore.
Twenty four dash oh two, two will be held until our next meeting, March the fourth. Next up is, um, twenty four dash oh three.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero three by Mister Ralph, Miss Blind, Mister Labuda. An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as nine ninety four Mount Vernon Road, city of Newark, Leaking County, Ohio. Parcel tax ID number zero five four dash two seven four one seven six dash zero zero dot zero 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 from that a single family residence R M. Medium density district to M F R multifamily residence district zoning code of the city of North Ohio.
Twenty four dash oh three will be referred to the planning commission. Uh, next up is twenty four dash four.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero four by Mister Marty, Miss Blind, Mister Ralph and Mister Labuda. To provide for the issuance of not to exceed one million, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost. Of church street area improvements and repair, including electrical sidewalk, street and streetscape and all necessary appearances thereto and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of twenty four dash oh four. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty four dash zero four.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy to adopt second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marmy.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four dash oh four passes eight zero. Next up is twenty four dash oh five.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero five by Mister Marty, Miss Blind, Mister Ralph and Mister Labuda. To provide for the issuance of three hundred seventy thousand dollars of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds. For the purpose of paying a portion of the city's cost for Horns Hill. Roads sanitary sewer project improvements and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of twenty four dash oh five. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty four dash zero five.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four dash oh five passes eight zero. Next up is twenty four dash oh six.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero six by Mister Marty, Miss Blind, Mister Ralph and Mister Labuda. Provide for the issuance of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds. For the purpose of paying the cost of construction of the stream bank. Protection project, including replacement of the sheet pile dam on Racton Creek site preparation and all necessary occurrences and declaring an emergency.
Uh, you've heard the reading of twenty four dash oh six. What is your wish?
Mister President. Mister Marmy. Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty four dash zero six.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Blind, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Chu, Mister Cost. Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four dash oh six passes eight zero. Next up is twenty four dash oh seven.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero seven by Mister Marty, Miss Blind and Mister Ralph. An ordinance consolidating three bond anticipation note issues that city of Newark, Ohio, declared an emergency.
You've heard the reading of twenty four oh seven. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty four dash zero seven.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four oh seven passes eight zero. Next up is twenty four dash oh eight.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero eight by Mister Nine, Mister Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind, Mister Ralph and Mister Labuda. An ordinance preventing the position classification pay range and department authorization tables of the city of Newark Department of Public Service. Division of Cemetery and Parks by abolishing the classification of equipment operator and creating the classification of grounds maintenance worker and setting the compensation therefore.
Twenty four dash oh eight, oh eight will be held until our next meeting, which will be March the fourth. Um, next up is resolutions on the second reading, twenty four dash oh one.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero one by Mister Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind, Mister Neely, Mister Wrath, Mister Chu and Mister Labuda. Resolution authorizing directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Department of Homeland Security. For fiscal year twenty twenty three fire act grant programs in support of training programs, equipment purchases, funding for personnel. Fire prevention and fire safety programs throughout the city.
You heard the, uh, reading of twenty four dash oh one. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero one.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four oh one has passed eight zero. Next up is twenty four oh two.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero two by Mister Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind, Mister Neely, Mister Wrath, Mister Chu and Mister Labuda. Resolution authorizing directing the mayor of the city of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety. For an award of fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five funding under the Ohio EMS Training and Equipment Grant Program.
You've heard the reading of twenty four oh two. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four oh two.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four oh two passes eight zero. Next up is resolution twenty four dash oh three.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero three by Mister Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind, Mister Neely. Mister Wrath, Mister Chu, Mister Labuda. A resolution authorizing injecting the mayor of the city of Newark to apply for funding from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance. Under the Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program.
Heard the reading of twenty four oh three. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero three.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four oh three passes eight zero. Next up is, uh, resolution twenty four dash oh five.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero five by Mister Marty, Miss Blind, Mister Wrath, Mister Cost and Mister Labuda. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Heard the reading of twenty four oh five. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero five.
Second. Motion by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser. Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four dash oh five passes eight zero. Next up is resolution twenty four. Zero six.
Resolution number twenty four Marty, Mister Cost, Miss Blind, Mister Wrath and Mister Labuda. A resolution authorizing directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency EPA. For the H two Ohio Rivers Initiative Chloride Reduction Grant Program.
Heard the reading of twenty four dash zero six. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero six.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marty, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion? Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
Yes.
Mister Labuda.
Yes.
Twenty four oh six passes eight zero. Next up is resolution twenty four dash seven.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero seven by Mister Cost and Mister Marty. A resolution implementing section thirty seven thirty five dot sixty five through thirty seven thirty five dot seventy of the Ohio revised code establishing and driving the boundaries of community reinvestment area in the city of North Ohio.
You've heard the reading of twenty four oh seven. What is your wish?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt twenty four dash zero seven.
Second. Got a motion by Mister Marmy to adopt, second by Mister Lang. Do we have any discussion?
Mister President.
Mister Marmy.
Um. We have been asked to amend this to include an additional whereas. Um, I'll read the whereas. Whereas the, and I believe it's in your packet. Uh, the area is described more particularly in the housing survey includes several parcels of developable. And residential land and natural boundaries of the area are Evans Boulevard to the west, East Pond Road to the north, North Twenty First Street to the east and Jackson Boulevard. To the south, along the southern boundaries of parcels numbered zero five four dash two eight six six nine eight dash zero zero dot zero zero zero. And zero five four dash two eight six four seven zero dash zero zero dot. One seven six, all land within such boundaries comprised the CRA. As defined below. It was described to us, but, uh, wanted to include it in the resolution. So I'm going to make a motion to amend to twenty four dash zero seven A.
Second. So we got a motion on the floor by Mister Marmy, second by Mister Lang. Um. To move this to twenty four dash seven A. So. Janine, please call.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Miss Blind.
Yes.
Mister Chu, Mister Cost.
Yeah.
Mister Hauser.
I'm staying.
Mister Labuda.
Yes. Sorry.
So the amendment has passed, um, seven zero with one of them staying. So now, um. To be to, um, call roll to. So.
Ready?
Yep. Ready.
Mister Lang.
Yes.
Mister Marty.
Yes.
Mister Neely.
Yes.
Mister Ralph.
Yes.
Mister Ryan, Mister, Miss Blind. Yes. Mister Chu, Mister Cost. Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Same.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
So that passes, um. Seven oh with one of them station. All right, next up is, um, resolutions on the first reading, twenty four dash eight.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero eight by Mr. Marty, Mr. Cost, Miss Blind, Mr. Rath and Mr. DeBudis. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty four dash oh eight will be held until our next meeting, March the fourth. Next up is twenty four dash oh nine.
Resolution number twenty four dash zero nine expedite by Mr. Marty, Mr. Cost, Miss Blind, Mr. Rath and Mr. DeBudis. Resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the reading of twenty four dash nine, what is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marty?
I make a motion to waive the two day reading rule on resolution twenty four dash zero nine, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marty, second by Mr. Lang to waive the two day reading rule, Janine, will you please call her?
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Miss Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yeah.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
Two day reading rule has passed eight zero.
Mr. President?
Mr. Marty?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash zero nine, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marty to adopt, second by Mr. Lang, do we have any discussion? Janine, please call her.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Miss Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
Twenty four oh nine has passed eight zero, next up is, uh, twenty four dash ten.
Resolution number twenty four dash ten by Mr. Marty, Miss Blind, Mr. Rath and Mr. DeBudis. A resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Newark to pay bills on behalf of the corporate council. Return to section five seven zero five dot four one D then and now certification and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of twenty four dash ten, what is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marty?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash ten, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marty, second by Mr. Lang. Uh, do we have any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marty?
Yeah, just want to clarify, the declaring of an emergency is, uh, because this one actually pertains to the resolution twenty four to dash oh nine. In order to pay that bill, uh, we have to do it then and now clause. Um, if we don't pass this, then it has to wait thirty days. Um, because, you know, we have to have the approval. So the finance one goes through immediately, it does not need an emergency because it goes as soon as it's signed. But legislation does not have resolution, so we need the emergency clause on this, so then it can go into effect immediately.
Like, anybody else? Janine, please call her.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Miss Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
Twenty four dash ten passes eight zero, next up is, uh, resolution twenty four dash thirteen.
Resolution number twenty four dash thirteen by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marty, Mr. Cost and Miss Blind. A resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to negotiate and enter into contract without competitive bidding for the purchase and installation. Of a new secondary boiler for the Newark Police Department.
Twenty four dash thirteen will be held until our next meeting, March the fourth. Next up is resolution twenty four fourteen.
Resolution number twenty four dash fourteen by Mr. Marty, Mr. Cost, Miss. Blind, Mr. Rath and Mr. DeBudis. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation with regard to their attention of outside legal counsel.
Twenty four dash fourteen.
Well, President?
Oh, Mr. Marty?
Make a motion to waive the two day reading rule on resolution twenty four dash fourteen, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marty to waive the two day reading rule, second by Mr. Lang, Janine, please call her.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Miss Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yeah.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
Two day reading rule has, uh, been waived, next.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash fourteen.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Marty to adopt, second by Mr. Lang, do we have any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marty?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, want to explain the waiving of the two day reading rule. Um, we did not think that this warranted the emergency clause. But this is, uh, pertaining to some legal counsel dealing with the, uh, downtown Newark association. And, uh, some contracts that we are wishing to. And put into place so then, uh, they can start construction. Uh, the timing of this is crucial as far as getting these contracts, uh, and getting our legal counsel together for this. So, um, if we do it this way, it still has to wait thirty days, that thirty days will give us sufficient time. Uh, so we just wanted to expedite this to save us two weeks is all we wanted to do. So just want to explain that.
Thank you, anybody else? Janine, please call her.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marty?
Yes.
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, Miss Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. DeBudis?
Yes.
Twenty four dash fourteen has passed eight zero. Next up is twenty four dash fifteen.
Resolution number twenty four dash fifteen by Mr. Shoot, Mr. Cost, Miss Blind, Mr. Rath and Mr. DeBudis. A resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty four dash fifteen will be held until our next meeting, March the fourth, and our last resolution tonight is twenty four dash sixteen.
Resolution number twenty four dash sixteen by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marty, Mr. Cost, Miss Blind and Mr. DeBudis. Resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service for the city of Newark, Ohio to enter into a purchase agreement for property located. At two sixty one and two sixty three Mount Vernon Road, Newark, Ohio.
Twenty four dash sixteen will be held until our next meeting, March the fourth. That was a lot tonight. Um, next up is comments from citizens, is it your last opportunity to come and speak, do we have anybody tonight? Want to? Name and address, I hear comments about three minutes, basically.
Steven Smith, two thirty seven Violet Court. Uh, on the last council meeting, uh, at the end of the, uh. Finance committee, there was a discussion about, uh, almost essentially of the, of the homeless camps that had. Had a, uh. Unsafe and unsanitary conditions and who was going to be doing that. But one particular comment caught my ear. About the, the, this, these homeless people being someplace where they should not be. And I think everyone can agree that that's true, the question is where should they be? And, um. That's a difficult question. And that's why in twenty twenty. A group of community leaders of various sorts, religious leaders, aid organizations, just trying to hold, uh, community members. Spent a lot of time. As in a, in a. Task force, written, uh, sponsored by the looking kind of task force on homelessness. Work out some solutions for this sort of problems. And. Got a nice report for it, I can forward copies of this to anyone interested. But nothing's been done with it. And. Until there is someplace safe for homeless people to go where they can get services. They can get their issues treated when, when that's necessary. They can have, have, um. Facilities. To have a clean and safe place to live, they're going to stay in this sort of downward spiral. So by not adopting some sort of solution to this. We're basically saying, we're okay with there being these encampments in places where they should not be. In unsafe and sanitary, uh, situation, unsanitary situations. I think. We as a community, as a city can do better than that, we should do better than that. That'll pass.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, Sadie.
Rashel Bullen Smith, two thirty seven Violet Court. Um, I've been. Self examining, um, the Newark station and it's my understanding, they've put up signs that they're starting to. Um, contract for. Buying options. The buildings there still don't have windows.[1462.44]